Hello again, everyone, and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session and on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, we're pleased that you could join us for today's broadcast. Today's forum is coming to you from the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center here in the heart of Clarksville. This forum is intended to give you, the voters, an informed choice when you head to the polls to cast your vote on November the 3rd. Today, we are going to have the opportunity to talk with the candidates who are going to be on that ballot for the Clarksville City Council representing Ward Number 12. From my left to my right, they are Mr. Guy Stanford, Mr. Adam Walker, Mr. Joe Shakina, Mr. John Lockwood, and Ms. Tricia Butler. In a moment, they will each have two minutes in which to present opening comments from their seats here at the table, and then following their opening remarks, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Now, you cannot see our panelists because we have five candidates on the stage before you right now. Our panelists are located in the front row of the auditorium here at the Cultural Center. They are Mr. Lee Erwin, Mr. Jimmy Settle, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question from our panelists. They will be responding in a rotating order. And at the conclusion of the questions, each candidate will then have two minutes in which to present a closing statement. The closing statements will be given from their seats, and they will be given in reverse order from their opening comments. The Clarksville City Council is comprised of 12 council members, each representing a different ward of the city. Members are elected each to a four-year term. The City Council votes on city ordinances and resolutions governing the city of Clarksville. It also approves the budget for the city and sets the city property tax rate. Council members approve changes to the city policies as specified in the city code. The council is also responsible for adopting potentially far-reaching policies and ensuring that those policies are indeed followed. The issues deal with taxation, safety, and services to a growing community. Let's begin now with our opening comments. We will hear first from Mr. Guy Stanford.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Guy Stanford Jr., 25 years old. I'm a Christian. I'm a father of two boys. I'm a local entrepreneur here in Clarksville and an investor. I take pride in being a quality mentor to change the life of the youth and young adults who seek help from me, whether it's business, whether it's just advice for day-to-day things that they may go through. My purpose for running for City Council is because I believe I can make an immediate impact in the city of Clarksville with my nationwide connections and partnerships. So if I'm given that opportunity, I won't let the city down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Mr. Adam Walker.
Absolutely. First, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event. I love the opportunity to bring transparency to these city elections, where a lot of people don't realize is that the most impactful movements and resolutions that are passed happen here on the local level. My name is Adam Walker. I'm running for City Council Ward 12. I look forward to hearing all the responses from the candidates up here. A little bit about myself, I am a sixth-generation Tennessean. I grew up here in Middle Tennessee. I moved up here in Clarksville in August of 2015, where I just fell in love with the city and decided to stay. I am a small business owner. I am very active in the community on the county and city level, and I look forward to running in this race. And at the end of the day, I love to see who will be representing this ward.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have opening comments from Mr. Joe Shakina.
Good afternoon, and I thank you all for hosting this great event. Again, I'm Joe Shakina, a 30-year resident of Clarksville, 28 years of military service, with 20 years here in the 5th Special Forces Group at Fort Campbell, been retired for 10 years, and quite active in the community for the last 10 years. I do a lot with Austin P. I'm the president for the National Alumni Association and the president of the Military Alumni Chapter, where I actually focus on raising scholarship endowments for our students there, and also with the Montgomery County Veterans Coalition, where I work to identify and understand the needs of our veterans. Since I've been campaigning, I've actually been out in the wards, listening to the residents, listening to their concerns, documenting them, and getting a pulse of what their concerns are, because that is what I want to do. I want to represent the people and be their voice. Thank you. Again, Joe Shakina.
Thank you. Next, we'll have opening comments from Mr. John Lockwood.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting this event, as others have said. My name is John Lockwood. I've lived in Clarksville for 27 years. I'm a retired Army veteran. I retired 22 years ago. I work as a contractor on Fort Campbell. I'm a bivocational pastor. I pastor a local church here in town. We just celebrated our 20-year anniversary at the church. I'm married, been married for 41 years, have three grown children, three daughter-in-laws, and have been blessed with six grandchildren. This is my second time to run for City Council. I ran against Mr. Burkhardt in 2012. I think I scared him a little bit, got kind of close, but he won. So I spoke with him, and he said maybe I ought to try it again since he wasn't running. So I have a heart for Clarksville. I've lived in Ward 12 for 25 years. I've watched the city make tremendous growth over the years that I've been here. So many good things that have happened, and I just want to be a part of continuing the good things that are happening in Clarksville. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll have opening comments from Ms. Tricia Butler.
Hey, y'all. My name is Tricia Butler. I am a veteran. I'm a mom, and I was brought here to Clarksville by the way of the United States Army. My husband is also a veteran. We met in Iraq, and this is where we came together on Married Army Couples Program and decided to put down our roots. I'm running for City Council simply to be a servant again. I took a look up on the City Council, and I said, "Hey, there's no one up there that looks like me." And I don't mean physically. I mean, you know, just regular guy. At the time, I was a housewife. So that's basically... I spent the last year and a half getting to know the ropes, because I thought if I was applying for a position, I should probably get an idea of what I was getting myself into. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We've heard opening comments from each of our candidates now on the ballot for Clarksville City Council Ward Number 12. Let's turn to our panelists. Again, they are off-camera. They are seated in the front row of our auditorium. We will begin first with Mr. Jimmy Settle, and his question will go first to Mr. Guy Stanford, then a response by Mr. Walker, and then Mr. Shakina, then Mr. Lockwood, and then also Ms. Butler. So let's begin with Jimmy Settle's question.
Thank you. Mr. Stanford, there are a variety of capital projects in the works in city and county government at the present time to support events, concerts, sporting events, that sort of thing. The county's multipurpose event center accompanied by a city parking garage is one example. The city also has 300 acres that's set aside for a family athletic complex someday off of Rossview Road. There's still talk of a downtown performing arts center. There's some recent progress on a new hotel and conference center with an office park near Exit 4. And with all that in mind, I just kind of want to know, what is your stance on local government being involved in these kinds of public projects? And of any of the projects on that list, is there one that should get priority in your view, if you like that?
Oh, yes, sir. I think we should be heavily involved in it. We're growing very, very fast, and all those things will bring the community together, bring families together, and create jobs. So for us to be kind of compared as like North of Nashville is kind of what they call us. In order for us to get to that stature, we've got to have things that people from out of town can come here and have things to do, and consistent things that we can do here as a town. One of my core competencies is sustainable entertainment. My biggest reason for that is we want families to have things to do together, like the adults and the kids. So I think all those things are very important. I think we should be involved with it, because we know the town, we know how to go about doing the research, and, you know, the City Council and the local government, you know, knows how to conduct those things in a professional manner, and knows how to get the reach and the word out for everyone to come out and get their input from the citizens. So I think we should be very heavily involved in it.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Adam Walker, your response.
Yeah, absolutely. Guy giving a great answer over here. Catch up after that one. When it comes to these types of developments, when it comes to these type of projects, I typically lean to, when it comes down to it, to really try to help and promote and encourage private investors to get involved here in Clarksville. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be these mom-and-pop shops, it's going to be these companies that come in here and build these facilities, like the City Forum, X, Y, and Z, that really bring in that entertainment, things to do. But if I had to pick an area where I believe that we need to focus the most, I would have to agree with Guy, it's really with the entertainment. This is where I go back to my prior interviews, when I say that Clarksville itself is a young town when it comes to the age. Young people like fun things to do, young people like fun places to go, and we really need to focus on promoting those types of environments, so that those type of people will stay here and stay rooted, and build families, and the whole cycle can go begin over again.
Thank you. And Mr. Shakina.
Yes, great question, and I reflect back on my time in Leadership Clarksville, where one of the projects was to make Clarksville a destination city. And that question rings the bell to that. So I'm all in favor of the growth, and I've been asking the residents in Ward 12, what do they feel? What's important to them as far as entertainment, as far as parks and recreations, as far as the event center? And I want to get a pulse from them, and I told them, I will always promise to bring their views and their concerns of everything that we do in the city to the council. And that's my take. I won't speak on behalf of myself. I will always represent the people.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll shift to the other side of the podium and go to Mr. John Lockwood for the response.
I think it's time for Clarksville to demonstrate growth. I've said many times before in running campaigns that we've fallen behind. Hopkinsville, many years ago, had an event center that Fort Campbell, other entities in town would go to. Oak Grove has opened a gaming center, all the kind of things there that's drawing people from Clarksville outside of our city, so revenue goes outside of our city. And I think with these projects going forward, we could see a lot of entertainment, as been said, family activities. We've been doing well with activities, with the ice skating rink and things here downtown in the Commons. But there are other things that we need to do to push forward. We're the fifth-largest city in the state, and we need to look like it and draw more people in through activities and events that can go on here in town. Thank you.
Thank you. And your response, Ms. Tricia Butler.
I think that culture, which is what we're talking about with the performing arts center and things like that, the culture comes with growth of a city. It's just the natural progression. I also think that if there is a good idea, there will be investors. I support especially the MPEC, since it's already something that's going to happen. I support, I think that we should support and get out there and, you know, patronize it. But futuristically, looking forward, I do not think that entertainment is the business of the government, and I would default that to private investors.
Thank you very much. We will now turn to Mr. Lee Erwin for our next question from our panelists, and it will be addressed for the first response to Mr. Adam Walker.
Mr. Walker, a moment ago, we had opening comments from you and the other candidates, but quite simply, what qualifies you for the office of City Council, and why should people vote for you?
Yeah, great question. I guess the first thing I'll start with is when I moved up here in 2015, I have spent the last five years meeting with every county commissioner, every city councilman, every elected official, every business owner that I possibly can, every resident that I can, to start building those relationships, because when it boils down to it, I'm just a single individual. Okay? Me, as a single city councilman, will not be able to accomplish what I could accomplish when I have the rest of the council behind me or the rest of the community behind us. I'm tired of this idea that one person can get it done, and we want to, for Clarksville to be better and for us to move forward, we have to be better. We have to, together. Also, my age, there's a huge idea that you must be an older person to be able to hold office. Well, I believe being a young blood, young buck with a devotion and a drive, that the city will have my attention 24/7 will make me a very qualified candidate for this seat.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shakina.
Yes, great question, what qualifies me. The first, I have three things. My experience as a 28-year military veteran, I've actually ran programs at CONUS here in the United States, and I've ran programs overseas. I've managed large budgets, multimillion-dollar projects, a lot of administrative and operational skills. So I have that, and I've worked with foreign governments, cross-cultural domains on a variety of issues. So I bring that experience there. Then I have the knowledge. Masters in Strategic Leadership, and also have Leadership Clarksville. So I have a good understanding of what the city and the county government actually, and the other supporting entities, what do they look like, and what functions are there, and where they need some more support. And that's why I'm running. And again, like I said, I'm already doing a lot of things here in the community, and I have the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lockwood.
Like Joe said, I'm a retired military veteran. I spent 20 years in the Army, acting in leadership. I've served as a pastor of a local church for 20 years. I'm the kind of guy, I do things till it's over. I've been married for 41 years, still married, you know? So I'm used to working through things, working around things, working with other people. You know, being a pastor of a church, constantly working with someone else to make things better, always trying to look to how we can embed the city, your church, our community, not just Ward 12, but the entire city of Clarksville. I've worked as a car dealership, as a manager of a car dealership, so I'm used to working with people, again, on the retail side, customers, employees, managing big budgets, buying cars, selling cars. And I have a heart for Clarksville. I want to see Clarksville move forward and see the city better in any way it can go better. That's what I want to see. Thank you.
Ms. Butler.
I promised myself when I started running that I would not use my military experience. However, 10 years in the military, that is my experience. So I too have a lot of leadership training and experience. I also manage $250 million budgets in Aviation Brigade. But to be honest with you, those things are qualifications, and they are important, but really, I think my biggest qualification is just that I care. And I said I wasn't going to make campaign promises, and one of the few that I've made is that I will listen and that I will respond.
Thank you very much. Let's go now to Mr. Guy Stanford.
So, excuse me. What qualifies me, I've been in Clarksville for 24 years. I know the city inside and out. I've been a voice for the community for a very long time now. I started my annual scholarship when I was 19 years old. I've been investing into students' higher education for some time. I also have a Masters in Strategic Leadership, so I'm equipped to handling big projects. I've created about 30, 35 jobs so far, just this year alone, and I'm on pace to double that by next year. So I have a lot of ways to collect data. I have a lot of resources to make the city great, and I definitely want to go about it by seeing what the people think, the people that'll be impacted by those decisions, and contrary to popular opinion, with me being one of the younger candidates, I feel like my experience does speak for itself for things that I've been doing since I was 18 or 19, as far as starting companies and building jobs. So I feel like I'm qualified for the job.
Thank you very much. Our next question will come from Mr. Jay Alberta, who is also off-camera. Mr. Alberta, if you will direct your question for first response to Mr. Shakina.
Let's turn our attention to ethics for a second. Almost daily, we hear of elected officials in all levels of government discussing issues regarding ethical practices in business, their office or personality. What is your position on the role of an elected official and ethical standards?
And ethics is always going to play a part in it, because one's perception is one's reality. So if you're doing the right thing all the time, then you shouldn't have a problem. And that's something I work on. That's something I tell a lot of young people and older people. You know, you're always being graded, from the time you get up to the time you retire. So that's an individual responsibility, but I don't think the government should actually pay for someone who's accused or perceived as being in violation of some ethics or something that's ethical wrong. That's the individual. That's on the individual. I think they have a right to counsel, but not legal representation.
Mr. Lockwood, your response.
Thank you. I have a Bachelor of Science in Christian Ministries from Le University, and one of the classes that we took, probably three different classes in Christian ethics. To be an ethical person, that's just who you are. You have to set out to be unethical. We have laws set up, the Sunshine Law, others that prevent us from doing the wrong thing. I believe in transparency. Every candidate should be transparent. Every leader should be transparent. You are who you are. Character is who you are when no one's looking. So if you lack character, whether someone's watching or not, your ethical practices will come out. So I think all leadership should practice strong ethics, say what you mean, mean what you say, tell the truth, and just be honest, be yourself, and don't try to come up with some plan to do something backdoor. Doesn't help the city at all. Thank you.
Ms. Butler.
I know, I'm like, I'm not going to freak out right now. I am honest to a fault. Integrity is extremely important to me. If you followed me for any amount of time, you know that. If you talk to me for 10 minutes, you will know that. So being integral is extremely important to me, and I don't think that that is optional. I think that I'm holding out hope that that is not going to pass next month for the second reading, and I've already promised that if it does, I will bring it back up and try to get rid of it. I definitely think that making the people pay for an ethics complaint is defeating the purpose and further discouraging them from calling people out. So that's one of the problems in politics right now, and I'll tell you this much, I promise to always keep it real.
Thank you very much. Mr. Guy Stanford, your response to that question.
Yes, sir. So I think having high morals is very important in any leadership position. I do not believe that the taxpayer should be paying for accusations or things of that nature. I feel like that will open up the door for people to engage in unethical activity if they know it can be paid for. And I do believe in transparency. I believe having a high level of transparency makes people comfortable, lets them know that they can trust you. So I believe that'll always go a long way. But just to restate, I would not vote on that bill. I don't think it'll be a good idea, and I do feel like if that does pass, that'll open up the door for unethical activity, and we definitely don't need that right now.
And Mr. Walker.
Morals and ethics, doing the right thing when nobody's looking, or even when nobody is looking. That is a key foundation to being a leader in any capacity, whether that's in a nonprofit group, a local group of little significance, or as an elected official. If the community can't trust us, then how do we expect to accomplish anything? That's one of the reasons why I'm running, is to bridge that gap between the elected officials and the constituents in the community, to be an open door, to be transparent like a window, so people can see what was going on. And just for the record, I do not support taxpayer dollars paying for elected officials' attorneys of any accusations when it comes to ethic violations.
We go next to Mr. Jimmy Settle for the next question, and that will be addressed to Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Lockwood, from the Planning Commission to the courthouse, and yes, to City Hall, we've seen a lot of increased land use rezoning activity in these past few months. It seems like when COVID started, the rezonings just went through the roof. And a lot of that is a lot of pent-up interest in development after the situation is over with, I believe. Some people say it's out of control. What do you say about the rezoning that we're seeing right now?
Good question. I have watched, over the years that I've been here, many properties that there was plans that was zoned, for example, agriculture, which was a little less expensive, and then soon as it was purchased, changed to C1, R4, something where the cost increased. I've had the misfortune of watching, of being there, or being a part of the City Council or being at the City Council when a person who wanted their property rezoned came into the City Council chambers and committed suicide. So I've seen the good and the bad. There's some things that need to be changed. There's some I'm against, some of the residential housing, where you want to put three houses on a small, small block of land, and the houses are sitting right on top of each other. This happened in Arbor Green South, which is right behind where I live. They're so close, one house burned down, and the houses on both sides were destroyed because the fire melted, the vinyl siding and things like that. We have to look more clearly at that as we move forward.
Ms. Butler.
I am not going to tell somebody what they can and cannot do with their property. So chances are, if a zoning case comes across me for my vote, I'm going to say yes, bearing in mind and taking into consideration that what they're doing on their property is not infringing on another person's rights. Because in government, our purpose is to protect people's rights and to look out for people. So that's where I stand on the zoning cases in particular. When it comes to growth, I do currently champion and will continue to champion backfill into the areas of town rather than urban sprawl, and I think that covers that.
Mr. Stanford.
So this goes back to what I was saying about collecting data the right way and speaking to the people directly who these decisions will impact. If we absolutely have to rezone or do something of that nature, we need to at least go and explain to the people that are going to be impacted why we're doing it, why it makes sense, and why it'll make sense long-term. As Tricia stated, I mean, it's your property, you know, you do what you want to do, just be respectful. But we got to also keep in mind, with rezoning comes, you know, more noise, more risk, things like that. I'm a father, so when I think of things like that, I'm thinking about like, all right, well, who's coming to the neighborhood? Who's going to be around? What's going to come from this? So we got to just keep things like that in mind as we're voting on things like that. But we got to also keep in mind, we have to speak to the people directly who it's going to impact.
Mr. Adam Walker.
I think I'll give credit where credit is due. I think Tricia hit the nail on the head here. I am pro-property rights across the board. However, I think there's a fine line between doing something to your property and then affecting others around you. Okay? I think there's a difference between building a barn, or a shed, or, you know, additions to your property, and then wanting to build 400 apartments. That's going to bring more traffic to the area, that's going to affect road conditions that could possibly lead to traffic jams or even more wrecks, and that's when lives are involved. So I think we just need to do our due diligence as elected officials to uphold our oath to protect the liberties of individuals, while at the same time, making sure that others' freedoms and safeties are not infringed upon as well.
Mr. Shakina.
Just one note to add when it comes to zoning. My thing is, as an elected official, that we need to make sure that the support systems are in place for whatever is to come of the zoning, i.e., if there are going to be some apartment complexes built, or more houses being built, 400, 500, in a subdivision, then we need to make sure the roads, we need to make sure the drainage systems are properly built ahead of time, not as an afterthought, so when those residents are actually in those homes, they don't have a drainage problem. So that's my thing, accountability, think about the support structures on the front end, so we don't have to hear from the residents on the back end.
Thank you. Mr. Lee Erwin has the next question, and it will be addressed to Ms. Tricia Butler.
Ms. Butler, in 2019, Clarksville was named the number-one best place to live. In 2020, the best place to retire in Tennessee. So what are your thoughts for ensuring that as our community grows, our infrastructure can grow right along with it?
Of course, we're the best place to live. We have all the best people. You know, I think that goes along with a lot of the stuff that we've already discussed about growth and making sure that, well, you said, making sure infrastructure stays up to date. I think a lot of that should fall on the contractors and the people that are doing the building, and, you know, and then each of us as an individual to continue keeping the community as it is. And I know that we're a highly transient community, but even in spite of that, I would like to see us become maybe closer, a closer community. So that's important to me. But I... to me. But I know it's, I would definitely put some of that on to the people that are coming in, the businesses that are coming in and building up. I think, I think there's a personal responsibility that goes along with that.
Mr. Stanford.
Research, research, research. We have a lot of, you know, businesses bunched up on Wilmer Rudolph right now. So if people want to retire here, we need to spread things out some. You know, you want to be comfortable when you come. You don't want to sit in traffic for 15 to 20 minutes if you're just trying to go grab something to eat at Fat Shack. I think that we need to understand that, of course, the developers have to do a great job. And we do need to be proactive in our approach. We need to do a lot of research and see exactly what it is before we start pulling any triggers on any projects. But I do agree, it is an amazing place to retire. But in order for that to be comfortable for people to come here, we got to spread things out. And I feel like that's the biggest thing. Wilmer Rudolph, you kind of have to go there for most of the things we need in Clarksville. So if we start finding different ways to put things in different places, I feel like it'll be even more comfortable.
Mr. Walker.
I think we need to be preemptive with our infrastructure. I think all the candidates up here agree that Clarksville is growing and that's not going to stop nor can we stop it. I use 24, for example. There's debate going back and forth on whether to just build a third lane, to build a fourth lane, to build a third lane and purchase the property for the fourth lane when development needs. I think we all realize that when we're trying to get a state road, I worked on, you know, well, let's start the clock here. 10 years from now, then we'll, we might be able to see some state appropriate funds, and that's just how it works. I think we, instead of waiting till the problem arises and trying to find a solution, we need to look to the future and see, okay, this could be a possibility or this is going to happen. Let's go ahead and find the solution and fix the solution or enact it so that when it does happen, we don't run into these problems that we do now.
Mr. Shekinah.
So the question comes to mind for me is, how do we make Clarksville livable at any age? And that's not just with entertainment for young people, but a lot of the older people, the walking trails, the parks and things like that. So when I'm out in the community, throughout Clarksville, I'm asking residents what's important to them in terms of livable at any age, for their parents, for their grandparents, what amenities do they want to see, adult centers as far as recreation centers for adults and things like that. So a lot of things we need to look at in committees, and I'm fond of committees, having groups of collective people to come together with different ideas to actually work on some courses of actions. And then you present those courses of actions for some decisions to be made.
And Mr. John Lockwood, you have the final response to this question.
I believe in being proactive rather than reactive. Over the years that I've been in Clarksville, I've watched previous administrations spend thousands of dollars on surveys and studies that never went anywhere. When we started building houses, we noticed traffic studies and things like that. But even in Ward 12, Ms. Butler can tell you where she lives, it's a headache to get out of. Tyler Town Road, it's with LG opening, that created more traffic, but the road is not any wider. It's an old farm road with asphalt on top of it. But we have to be proactive when we start doing these things. A lot of good things have come. We have a fire station there now, but we had to wait until Ward, or the Station 12 was built because of the deal with Hancock Tire to get Station 11 going. But we have a fire station now. That's, that's being proactive, not reactive. So I think more, if we get more proactive at what we're doing, we'll see things run a little smoother.
Thank you very much. We will have the final question from our panelists, coming from Mr. Jay Alberta, and it will be addressed to Mr. Guy Stanford.
Let's do it.
Wow, we've had a lot of questions. So let's take it a little bit personal for a second. Well, let's talk about what you think your greatest professional accomplishment is. Everybody wants to know more about y'all individually. So what's your greatest professional? And you can leave off your wife and kids because we know all those are the best ones too.
Do I have to pick one? I can get two, three, four, five. Okay. Well, my annual scholarship means a lot to me. I've got to see some of my recipients grow into wonderful professionals, doing great things in college. That means a lot to me. I did that when I was 19 and 25 now. So it's cool to see that happen, see the growth there. Infinity Co., my tech company, we've done some, some nice things in the tech game that, that I feel like will be unmatchable here in the next two to three years. That's where my entrepreneur career really started, is was through tech. And lastly, I'll say Fat Shack. You know, we brought a Shark Tank company here, you know, Mark Cubans, pretty sure you guys know who he is. He's one of the owners. To bring something like that here to Clarksville, that's never been done before. And to create, you know, 30-plus jobs in the community and bring that much excitement, that meant a lot to me and to my family.
Mr. Adam Walker.
First of all, I want to say, from the previous question, nice plug with the Fat Shack. I like that. I like that a lot. I think, I'm with Guy here, I have a few across the board. I think if you take five minutes to Google me, you'll find out that I lean pretty conservatively on a lot of things. At 22, I was hired by the Tennessee Republican Party as a field organizer where I managed 15 counties for Governor Lee Marshall Blackburn's election. At 23, I was elected as the men co-chair of the Republican Party here in Montgomery County. On top of that, I think my pride and joy would be my startup company I'm working on now, Cerberus Security, a startup private security firm here in Clarksville, specifically focusing on business security, training and cyber. Even though it's still in the startup period, it is my pride and joy because it's something that I can devote and really put love and care, which is kind of the direction that I want to focus on with the city. But yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Shekinah.
Being a 28-year military veteran, I would say, leading some young men, some of the finest young men, some green berets into combat, doing the works of this nation and bringing them all home. That's been my greatest attribute as I look back. And then managing the foreign language program for the 5th Special Forces Group and actually making that a premier organization for the entire US Special Operations Command, being the model, influencing policies at the Special Operations Command level and at the Army level and at the DOD level, Department of Defense level. So those are some of the greatest things I've done. And then in the community, of course, building scholarship endowments at Austin Peay. That's very near and dear to me, and that's something that I will always continue to do as long as I can breathe. Thank you.
Mr. John Lockwood.
I have a couple of things that to me mean a lot, but to other people might not mean quite as much. I spent a long time in the military, 20 years. When I graduated from college, I tell people, don't do like I did. They say, what do you mean? Said, I got my bachelor's degree. I was the oldest guy walking across the stage. I was 45-years-old. But I did it. Pushed through the military, pushed through going to Austin Peay as a social works major, then transferring to Lee University and graduating from there. And then 20 years ago, planting a church with nothing, meeting in hotels until we got going. And now here we celebrate a 20-year anniversary. So to me, that, just personally, that was a great accomplishment.
And Ms. Tricia Butler.
You know, I've done a lot of really cool stuff. I graduated culinary school, currently go to Austin Peay. But I have to also default back to, I think that going to war and making it back and making it back with my battle buddies is probably my greatest professional accomplishment. And I would say that that's probably also why I'm constantly pushing forward. Because, you know, it's like living to try to top that, which will probably never happen.
We never know sometimes what the future holds, that's for sure. Thank you very much to our panelists today for asking the questions. We will go now to our closing comments. They will come in reverse order from the opening remarks. We will hear first from Ms. Trish Butler.
I would really love for everyone to get out and cast their vote for Tricia Butler for Ward 12. However, to be honest with you, I just want everybody to get out and vote, to get involved, engaged, play a part in your civic duty and your community. Otherwise, win, lose or draw, my number is 931-9331416, and I'm always here for anyone who might need it. Thank you.
And thank you. Next, we'll have closing comments from Mr. John Lockwood.
Again, thank you to the chamber for this opportunity, just to get my name out. You can look at johnlockwood.com, on Facebook at Lockwood412, find out more about me. I'm running for city council. I'm a person who listens and acts on it. If you come to me with an issue, I'm going to push it forward and just encourage you, as Ms. Butler said, get out and vote. Whether you vote for me or not, I asked for your vote. But if you don't vote for me, at least vote. Get out and do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have closing comments from Mr. Joe Shekinah.
For me, it's all about service. I've served, I'm serving right now and I'll serve tomorrow. And that will be my closing remarks. That is all about service and I'm always willing to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Adam Walker.
I just want to thank the chamber again for holding this forum. I do want to say we have some incredible candidates up here. And win, lose or draw, I'll be happy to either be an elected official or be a constituent to either one of these folks. Because like I said, together, we have to be a community that fights to keep Clarksville the greatest city in this country. But I default back to being a sixth-generation Tennessean. My family is from Middle Tennessee. I moved up here in 2015 where I fell in love with this city. I love it more than anything. And all I want to see is it to prosper and to keep moving forward. I want to fight to bridge the gap between elected officials and the community to bring transparency to the city council and beyond. If you're looking for someone that is young, that young blood that has a devotion and a drive with new ideas, check out adamwalkertn.com and vote Adam Walker for Ward 12.
Thank you very much. And next, we'll have closing comments from Mr. Guy Stanford.
Again, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event like you guys always do. So I do want you guys to go out and cast your votes for Guy Stanford Jr. for Ward 12, not only just for the city council, but for presidency and everything that makes an impact in our world today. I do have full confidence that if I'm elected, I will make Clarksville the most innovative city in the state of Tennessee. And over my four-year term, I will make Clarksville one of the most innovative cities in the entire country. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to each of our candidates for sharing their time and their thoughts with us today, as they will be on the ballot for Clarksville City Council Ward Number 12. Mr. Guy Stanford, Mr. Adam Walker, Mr. Joe Shekinah, Mr. John Lockwood and Ms. Tricia Butler. I want to say thank you each very much for your participation here today. But more than that, your willingness to serve this community as an elected official in the coming year. So thank you very, very much. Your participation is greatly appreciated. I want to remind you at home that early voting will take place starting Wednesday, October the 14th through Thursday, October the 29th. You can cast your vote at the Election Commission office. They are located at 350 Pageant Lane, Suite 404. And I want to say thank you to our panelists once again. Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, Mr. Jay Alberta, they are off-camera for this particular session. But this is the seventh session that they have been our panelists for throughout the course of this day. It has been a long day on some accounts, but it's been a very rich and good day on all other accounts, I assure you. I want to say thanks also to our timekeeper throughout the course of this day, Mr. Phil Harpel. Thank you very much. And a big thank you to the staff here at Customs House Museum and Cultural Center for hosting today's forum. And thanks also to Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville area Chamber of Commerce, as well as Rick Goodwin Productions for making this forum possible. Remember, November the 3rd is the time for you to exercise your right and your responsibility to go to the polls and vote for the candidates of your choice. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for listening.